Regular board meeting. Roll call, please, Ms. Tameri.
Member Ash.
Here.
Member Dwin.
Here.
Member Pats.
Present.
Member Affelt.
Here.
President Dice.
Here. If I can now, please ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any changes, amendments to the agenda set out this evening?
No, there are no changes.
All right, can I get a motion to approve from board member?
So moved.
Awesome. Great, have a motion and a second, any objections to that?
No.
Great. So we now move on to item D. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on items that are not covered on this evening's agenda. Anyone? All right. Great. We'll now move on to item E, E1. Are there representative from, a representative from CSEA? Representative from ETA? Now on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, members and President Dice. Tonight, I just wanted to first take a moment to acknowledge that we have some new staff members in our community, in our district, and we asked them to come tonight so we could introduce them. Or maybe they can introduce themselves as well, say a few things, so. Should we, how do you want to proceed on this one?
Yeah, maybe come on up, maybe.
Come to the podium, or?
Yeah, that'd be great. Oh, nice to meet you.
Oh, did she? Oh, I didn't know.
Miguel Dwin, nice to meet you.
Great, how are you?
Yeah, we've met, yeah.
Good to see you again.
Have you on the mic, so people at home can meet you as well.
All right, well.
And Mr. LaBass, could you talk right into the mic?
You gotta really talk into the mics.
Yeah.
All of these restrictions.
This gets over 12 hits on YouTube, just so you know.
So I'm the new vice principal or assistant principal at Annaye. It's very happy to be here. I came from Mount Diablo Unified, and before that, I spent several years as a science teacher in Los Angeles and in Sacramento County. So I'm very happy to be here. If you have any questions or want to talk to me further, please feel free to do so.
Great to have you, thank you so much.
Do you want to tell us where you came from last, where were you?
I just did.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry.
You were chatting. But I'll do that again. I came from Mount Diablo as an instructional coach. But I really have been a teacher for 25 years. I'm a scientist. I'm a biology teacher from 25 years prior to this, this break.
Welcome.
It was, does that mean you only taught biology or did you teach any other kind of science?
Oh, no, I taught.
Yeah, what else did you teach?
I taught sixth grade to 13th grade, in fact, I taught some community college molecular bio. But I, I've taught physical science and earth science and chemistry as well. And I've also had, I did a year abroad, so I taught in Europe. And I was educated in Sweden, so I have some, some of that international appeal as well.
So you, you also have experience teaching science at the elementary level and?
Not, not, not specifically, fifth, fifth grade.
I thought I heard you say six.
Yeah, I did fifth grade a little bit too in England, but that's as young as I've done, except for in an informal manner.
Yeah, so our middle school level.
Yeah. I, I did, but I don't want to say that I didn't do elementary, because I, as a department leader in this district, this large district, I did a lot of reaching out to articulate between middle and high school, or middle and elementary. So we did a lot of trainings with regard to elementary. And I also have my head around the next generation's science standards too, so.
Oh, good.
That's great.
And that's a big piece of our transition over the next couple of years.
Yeah.
Am I not speaking loud enough?
Yeah.
That's better.
Look, are they though?
Well, welcome into our district, and thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
If you have further questions, of course.
We'll find you.
Absolutely.
I'm looking forward to getting you all together.
And Ms. Herell, I'm sorry, will you come out and introduce to other new staff members? I'm sorry that I said.
I was gonna, no, I don't have a question, I was just gonna say, you know, I, working in Mount Diablo, I am familiar, not with you, but with your work, and I'm very pleased to have you join us, Ms. Tameri.
Oh, thank you very much.
Very excited to have you.
I'm excited as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So you can tell us off record about Mr. Pats in Mount Diablo. And his reputation.
I'm okay with that being on the record.
Well, I had to give a little, a brief introduction for, for Mr. LaBass, but I think you did a little, no, you did one.
That was my fault, not your fault.
I'm going to give a brief introduction to Mr., for Mr. Steve Beatty and invite him to come up and elaborate even further. I'll start by saying that Mr. Beatty is credentialed in life science, physical science, physics, and mathematics. He worked in the California Public Schools for 10 years and in the technology sector for 15 years with, working with scientific learning and with Halliburton. Mr. Beatty will be teaching science at ESS, including a class in robotics.
Oh, nice. Awesome.
Hello, and thank you for hiring me. My speech is basically ditto. She did a superb job, she covered it all. I did get my degree from Cal. I don't know if you mentioned that, but that's the only thing other, else that I could, can add to that.
How is it going? So you're there now, how's it going so far?
I have some freshman students that, it's just, they're, sorry for getting emotional, but their minds, they're just so excited about, you know, you throw out a question and they're just so excited about it. Ah, getting emotional. That's why I came back. I made a lot more money in the, in the private sector, but I'm sitting at a desk eight hours a day. And for the last, sorry, for the last three years, I kind of thought, I want to go back. Gosh, I didn't realize this was gonna happen.
Don't worry, we're used to it.
But anyway. But it is, it is exciting to see that again, and I'm looking forward to this year.
That's great.
Thank you.
Appreciate the passion. Really do.
Welcome.
Really appreciate it.
You're the first alumni from Cal that I didn't hear go bears. So I appreciate that.
I have to say, your emotionality speaks more about you than your resume.
That's right.
Absolutely. Great.
If you want to go back up, Brett. If you want to go back up and cry too, we'll give you time.
No, that's great, it's a great welcome.
There you go.
Ms. Herell, do we have anyone else here? Okay, thank you.
Maybe we could hear at least their resumes.
Can you share with us?
Yeah, a brief of who else we've brought into our family.
Okay, for special education, we hired Mr. Ross Benbrook. Mr. Benbrook has a special education instruction, instruction credential. He has worked in public and private schools, teaching special education and mathematics. He loves music, enjoys poetry slams, and is a proud supporter of the Youth Speaks Performances and Arts in Education Movement. He will be supporting students with disabilities in the general education classrooms at ESS.
Nice.
And we have Ms. Carla Kennedy, who is the English teacher at the high school, or one of the English teachers at the high school. She has a single subject, English credentials. She has worked for UC Berkeley in the Mesa and the CEP. Well, Mesa is Math, Science, Engineering Achievement. CEP is Center for Educational Partnerships Programs at UC Berkeley. She has taught English and drama in Oakland USD. Last year, she worked in our district as a sub, and this year, she will be teaching English and drama at ESS.
Well, it really appears that we've hired some really high-quality teachers and administrators, so I'm very happy to hear that alone, that we have quali, high-quality individuals into our district now.
Thank you, and I must thank all of the staff who helped with the screening, who helped with the interviewing. Dr. Balf, especially with regard, with regard to the science teachers. Dr. Steele, and the time and energy she has spent in with the, with the special education searches and the staff overall with English and all of the other assignments. I have to thank and appreciate the staff for the help that they've given me this summer.
Yes, but they've done a wonderful, you're right, you guys have done a wonderful job. And I think that's one of the district's main goal going forward, is to really bring on high-quality staff to the district. So you all have done a great job, thank you.
Sorry to give you the hand, I'm sorry, I wanted to ask a question. When were these two teachers brought on?
Mr. Benbrook, who?
Because I was at.
Within the last, within the last week and same with Ms. Kennedy, the last two weeks?
For the last two weeks. And what about Ms. Bai?
Can we discuss that offline?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
So before you do, we just want to see if you're concluded, I think you're not finished with your report.
Thank you, Ms. Herell, very much. Board members, just as part of my update, I just wanted to make note, I think we've talked about this before, but now that I have it in my hands, I'm happy to see it. In the fall 2014 Emeryville City Guide, in the opening page, we have a thank you to the residents of Emeryville with some pictures of our students and some of the colleges that our students were accepted to. So I just wanted to, again, thank the city staff for all their cooperation in getting this information out, so we could say thank you to the residents for their ongoing support of our partial tax.
Great.
And that concludes my report.
All right, and before you do that, I know we have a member of the public that has a comment. Would you want mine, please, coming up to the microphone? Good evening.
Good evening, Rodney. Mr. Wong. Rodney Wong with the Citizens Oversight Committee.
I represent.
I'm representing the neighbor of the Anna Yates School. And as you know, we have a project that we're looking for, forward to in the next few years to come to fruition. And for those of you who have worked on it for the last five, 10, 20 years, a good on you for sticking to it. And my, my time with the Citizens Oversight Committee has been one that has been exciting. And I look forward, and I know all the new members of the Citizens Oversight Committee, welcome. Dr. Rubio, all of the new faculty and administrators. And there was one item that probably all of us have felt recently in Ferguson, Missouri, regarding that incident. And there's a question that just popped up in my mind about, on the new administration, Dr. Rubio, or anybody on the board that want to answer. Do we have good cross-representation and diversity in the hiring practice? That, you know, if you do know how we're doing or what your personal opinions are, please give comment, if not today, at a future meeting, and what your thoughts are. But I think that I always, I asked the seniors at the seniors here this past week, or the past couple of weeks, you know, isn't it amazing that that hasn't happened here in Emeryville? Where, which is a cross-section of many places and many things, and, but it hasn't occurred here. And in all my volunteer years I have spent here, it's amazing, it's truly amazing. Living between Oakland and Berkeley. All the, all the things that go on there. So, again, I welcome you. I hope your, your hearts and your minds and your spirit is open to the diversity that is in this city, and make up this city. So, welcome again.
Thank you, Rodney, appreciate that, Mr. Wong. That's a great point. And it actually tied on to a question I had, it's just in the future, I am curious about our ratios, gender, as well as, you know, and just our, the makeup of our district. So, I mean, it's timely, I appreciate that. But as Ms. Herell was standing there, I was thinking about that, and in terms of, you know, I know we have some reports that talk about, but it'd be great to hear about our staff as well, in terms of students, but it'd be great to hear about our staff as well, so.
Would that kind of be in line of maybe agendizing our recruiting process for teachers? And what that looks like? Come, come talk to the mic.
At a future board meeting, I can bring information in terms of the demographics of our, of our teaching staff. Because when we're recruiting, we are impartial, we do, we're looking for equality. So, and as a result of finding the best people, I think we're, in terms of demographics, I think we're well-balanced.
That'd be helpful, a future report.
So would that be more in line, recruiting process, report, is it the same thing, or is it something different?
I will find a way, I'll talk to you and I'll find a way to incorporate what you're looking for.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herell. So just by way of a board president's report, I just want to report that I have returned from Alabama. Fabulous trip to take my recent grad, my niece who graduated from the high school just a few months ago, and to take her on to further her education at Tuskegee University. She's a biology major, she made sure that was done before her family left. So I'm really excited about that. And it was fabulous to be on campus with tons of freshman students who are all from all over the country. Large numbers from California, they draw, Tuskegee draws a large population from California. And so it was quite dynamic to revisit a higher learning forum, I guess. And I wanted to stay, and I could not. But I think it was really powerful, and it showed, one of the experiences was the number of, the number of PhD, young PhDs on that campus doing quite a bit of research in a number of fields, and students of color being able to tap into those resources and witness, you know, what the possibilities are. So it was, it was a fabulous trip, and I'm looking forward to hearing about all of our students, our graduates, moving forward and into those different areas and their collective and individual experiences. So I am back, and I am supportive of our district's week. And hopefully, the board will have something for all staff in the next couple of days from the board. But we do wish everyone the best start of the school year. I'm certain I would hear echo from all board members. And, but onward and upward is my kind of tag. All right? So with that, we'll move into now another closed session. So we'll move into item F, and so the board will potentially be gone for about an hour, less than an hour. Is anything, I'm sorry, nothing? All right, so once the closed session is concluded, we will reconvene back to open session. Great. Like to reconvene back to open session. Can I have a report out, Ms. Tameri, please?
The board met in closed session and took up two items. The first one was conference with our labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6. And they gave direction to the superintendent regarding negotiations, negotiations with the California School Employees Association. No actions were taken. And the board also met to discuss the superintendent's evaluation, and no actions were taken.
Thank you, Ms. Tameri. We'll now move on to item I, consent calendar. Are there items board members wish to pull from consent? One through six?
Were you pulling?
Oh, I thought you were.
I have some question on, on one, four, five, and six.
One, four, five, and six. So any others from board members? We can just start with one. I also had one, but I got a response, I'll just note it as well too, for item one. Item one warrants?
You want to start with yours, maybe it's the same one?
Okay, I had a question about the first page, Ray, Ray A. Morgan Company Inc.
That was my same question.
Great minds, great minds. Who that was, what was that a reference to?
We've contracted with Ray Morgan to provide software and workflow pa, package as it pertains to going paperless. So it's, it automates high-volume copying, and it's called Laserfish, and files, and they call OCR, processing those documents and recognizing characters and names. After reviewing the plans for ECCL, there's, it's a little to no storage space for district records. And we have to maintain some of our records for, for life. Specifically, Q folders for those students who graduate from Emory High.
Any questions for Mr. Bonet?
Well, I have another question now, since I'm looking.
I'll just, I'll just note real, I thank you for that update, because that's what I got. And I recall that Ryan Choate had mentioned that this project was going on. So this is really, I just also want to commend the district for moving forward. It is typically a pretty expensive process to actually go electronic. So this contract is fairly small, considering our obligation to have documents. Is, or is this an initial payment? I was, I looked at your face, I said, maybe this is an initial payment.
Well, some of the work still has to be done. We still have to copy the files into, into the system.
It won't cost you $800,000 like it did me for a contract at my job. Okay, so, but no, no, that's a really significant project that has to be done. So that's a really great, great start for it. Thank you for that update. Member Dwin?
Yeah, just real quickly, can you explain on page two, the $72,000 for child development? Is that all the YMCA?
Yes, we pay those, those bills in larger pieces, and one of the reasons for doing that is because we don't receive all the funds from the state all at once. And sometimes the YMCA will bill us, and we have to hold on to the invoices because we haven't received the reimbursements from the state. So this is a catch-up.
So the $56,000 is a accrued liability from prior year, 13, 14, got paid in, I mean, yeah, 12, 13? 13, 14, it got paid in 14, 15?
That's correct.
And then the $16,000 is the, now that's this year, 14, 15. So it's, it's not accrued, is it?
I think it's all, it all has been accrued, yes.
Okay, just on that second line, okay, I got you. All right, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonet. Any other questions on the warrants?
Nope.
All right, thank you. And so the next item, I believe, was that four? Substitute teacher daily pay rate increase.
Right. Yeah, so as I understand the proposal, it is to increase our substitute pay to be the, the best in the area, or, you know, one of the best in the area.
Right now, we are one of the top districts, there's only one district that pays more by $2 a day. And the, the thought behind having a higher rate specifically during the months of August and September is because that's when the school year is beginning. And as is going on throughout the state of California for some reason, not all positions have yet been filled. So to help us recruit and retain substitute teachers for a longer term, we were proposing the $180 for just this brief period. And then on an ongoing rate, to help keep substitute teachers here, when we call in, whether they will come to Emory rather than go someplace else, then yeah, to have an, an enticement to have our daily rate to be $160 a day. Yeah, and then we help this be, this district be a first choice.
Yeah, are we having trouble attracting substitutes?
No, the beginning of the year, you generally, we do not have problems attracting substitutes. As the year wears on, and sometimes as substitute teachers then get positions later in the year, then that's when they start to fall off or drop back. And sometimes they'll have a, a longer paying position at another district. So this will just, will simply be a way to sort of keep people coming and looking at our district. In fact, if we're the highest paying, then we will have more people looking at Emory and signing up to work with Emory.
One of the things that happens with subs is they get a higher rate for long-term. And so not only they get locked up, but they really want those longer terms, not in this district.
No, in our district, we, we, it depends on.
But in other districts.
Yeah.
After the.
Because if they have, if we have somebody, we need them for three days, and we're going to pay them $150, and another district needs them for two weeks, they're going to go and get that two weeks, because it's a longer assignment. Or in a case like, sometimes when they have a vacancy, a teacher's out on maternity leave, that's a longer assignment. But on a day-to-day basis.
And I'm sorry, I just wanted to add, however, this, the idea of making us as competitive as we can be with our surrounding districts, this actually will be attractive in some ways because it is a slightly bit higher than even some of the long-term pay with other districts.
True.
At $160.
I mean, I think if my memory serves me correctly, that was the whole intent of us kind of raising up the hourly rate so we could attract, you know, better quality teachers. And we did this a few years ago, didn't we?
It's been several, it's been a while back.
It's been a while back.
And it worked.
Right, exactly.
So this is a refresher, as it were, to bump us back up to be a clear leader?
At the top.
And we talked in Ju, one of our, earlier, maybe it was July, about a substitute agenda item, with superintendent was going to come back to us at some point.
With the pool.
With an analysis about, yeah, the pool versus, you know, do we need to hire a permanent roving teacher who can sort of cover the?
Oh, I remember that, yeah.
Well, we're not quite at a place where we need to have a permanent roving teacher just yet, but that's always a possibility, it's always an option.
And I'm sorry, if the board would remind me of what that was, I thought, I knew there was a critical issue with on subs, and we were going to bring it back, and I thought this was actually, this is one of the ways I wanted to address it, but I'm trying to recall.
So well, that's, one of my questions, I guess, is, is this the address? This is part of addressing it.
This was my, part of my action to follow up on that.
Yeah, is there other, are there other stuff, you know, that, that we need to address? Because it's also a cost, we don't have enough subs. I mean, that was a discussion.
That was a discussion.
We weren't having enough subs.
It was a critical issue.
That we were able to attract, and that classes were being split.
Yeah.
And then they go to other teachers, and it's kind of disruptive for the day, because.
Well, now.
And, and, and we have to pay the teachers to take the extra classes, and that was being as costly or more costly.
So there's a part two to this for me. The part two for me is, and we can bring this back to the board, certainly, is to review our internal procedure and process, which I think is, Marion probably, safe to say, is very manual basis. I don't think it's online, I don't think, which also makes it hard for us to look back and for record-keeping and to do any analysis down the road. So part two now is, is to also now look at our internal process for how we procure subs, how we communicate, how we get subs, and how teachers report that. Is our internal system working as effectively as it should be? And so I would be very happy to bring that back to the board.
Yeah, I think, I think that.
Well, can I just quickly add to that? Can we add that item to Ms. Herell when she comes back, when we talk about the recruit?
Oh, HR.
Right, the HR piece, the recruiting process, we can just lump all of that into that particular conversation?
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions about item four? Thank you, Ms. Herell. We'll move on to item five, that's probably you two.
Yes, ma'am, it is. And that's, this is the Mills student teaching or practice teaching agreement, where they just, they send their student teachers out to work usually a semester at a time with our, with our teachers, to gain their teaching experience.
Yeah, so I'm in favor of entering into this agreement, and these are, you know, we get some very good student teachers from, from Mills, and my son's classroom has one this year that I'm very excited about. It's simply a question of the nine weeks versus the 18 weeks. The nine weeks seems short of a semester, and 18 weeks seems short of a whole year.
I just kind of rounded it off, I just kind of ballparked it at about a semester.
So nine weeks is a semester?
It depends on their assignment, no, it just depends on their assignment.
Or they, they're there.
Either the nine weeks or the 18.
They, they, they're not there the last two weeks or something, or?
I'm not always, I don't always have that, that count really firm.
But nine weeks is like two months. But our, so my son has a teacher now, she's leaving after October, or?
Okay, are you talking about the teacher or the student teacher?
The student teacher.
The student teacher is there, is part of her credentialing program, so her assignment is brief. So we could have a number of student teachers within a particular classroom, but the master teacher, the main teacher, is still there.
Oh, that I understand. So I'm asking, when the student teacher's there for nine weeks, is, are they only there for really part of the semester?
Then if it's only nine weeks, then it's part of the semester. Then if it's only nine weeks, then it's part of the semester.
Yeah, and eighteen, when they're there for eighteen weeks, they come back. Uh, this is just a factual question.
Right, it's just if their assignment.
They come back the second for another nine weeks, but again, it's not really the whole.
Semester.
Semester.
And, and just a clarifying question, is that the, that's not our design, it's the university's design.
It's where the program is designed.
That's the program design, at Mills. Just for clarification.
We do have some really great teachers.
Yeah, I mean, well, I'll take them if they're two weeks, but, but it, it just seemed like an odd number that's not.
I can investigate why they.
Commensurate with the.
That's just, that's just what they selected.
Length of the semester.
Could have to do with the number of hours. But we can question why they have, why the university has selected nine weeks.
Is it, maybe, i- i- is the nine weeks, maybe it's just that they're not there full-time, so it is spread.
I can't answer why the university picked that number. I can't answer that number.
Because it's their contract, basically, yeah.
Yeah, it's just their assignment, yeah, it's just how they assign their students.
Yeah, it's not a reason not to agree to the contract, it's just, I want to.
How's this structured?
Understand how it actually operates.
Okay, I can inquire.
Okay, and, and I'll ask, I'll ask my son's student teacher if she knows.
Any other questions for five? Um, how about we go into six?
Okay. Now, number six is with Cal State East Bay, and this is an actual teacher internship agreement whereby you have student teachers who are in a position for their credentialing program to recommend to the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing that that student have obtained an internship credential if that student has secured or can secure employment. And we've entered into this agreement with Cal State East Bay. They're a very good working partner with us and have been for a number of years.
You know what, Ms. Harrell, when you come back with that report, can you also give us the number of interns that we have in the district?
Where that we have had?
Total, yeah. And if you can also split them out between NE8 and ESS, that would be nice as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think you told us last time, you, you don't think we have any interns currently.
Right now, we have one.
So, so we hired one?
We hired one years past, and that individual is still on that internship credential.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, so that would be good to know what.
Well, I'm assuming with these contracts that we're approving, that we're going to be getting them in.
Well.
We don't get, we don't get a lot in. It's not as if once we get this contract, that's our recruiting technique. No, it isn't. We've had over the last, I'd say, five years, we've had three.
Yeah.
We don't do a lot.
So if, if we can't find a fully credentialed teacher, then we, we'll, we'll look for an intern. But to get an intern, we have to have a contract in place.
Correct.
And, you know, I think in, interns are preferable to going to a long-term sub, which is going to be two months, I mean, we should get someone who's.
And the interns are very closely supervised by their credentialing program.
Right. So my two questions on this are, is this, um, I think this is the first time we've seen the East Bay contract, is that right?
It's the first time you've seen it this year. We've seen it before, it may have been a few years ago, but we've, we've had it before.
Yeah, I mean, it has been upgraded with the new.
Mm-hmm, new CTC requirements.
Requirements in terms of supervision and mentoring by both IHE and the district.
Correct.
So, number one, i- i- is a procedural question of should this be the first reading? And, and do we need a second reading? And I'm looking at our president.
I'm listening.
Yeah, of whether, wh- whether this needs to come back to us as part of our normal practice.
In terms of initial, I see your point. Because of that change and that, that, that element has changed? Or just in general as a document in front of us?
Which specific?
Well, it's, it's really both points, I mean, it's a, it's a general document.
Well, I guess.
Usually contracts come to us twice, but this has bumped, bumped up the requirements on this specific contract.
Yeah, I think, I think, well, I just think procedurally what we've done in the past, because this is one of those, I won't say those, but a contract that is consistent or we've seen it every other two or three years, I think, happens. I mean, it covers normally, right?
As opposed to a new contract.
And it's, and I think the other ones have been primarily in terms of the, kind of the board's desire to see certain things. There's been a value associated with it or a new.
There's no value really to this contract.
New service, so it's kind of, in this case, it's more of a placeholder, but we may have some reporting interests to have, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, I think it's, it's not been one in that category, I'll say, but.
And there's no, and like you said, there's no value really to this contract, there's no dollar amount.
Monetary value, right.
Yeah, there's no dollar amount associated with it. So, I mean, personally, I'm fine with approving it.
Without a devil or a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, then my, my substantive question is looking at page eight, which is sort of a good chart summary of the, the extent of the.
Relationship, huh?
Yeah, of the, of the requirements. In particular, the middle column is the district support that needs to be provided. A total of thirty-six hours, at least one hour a week of mentoring and supervision and ten hours a week over the, the course of the, um, uh, school year on, on EL supervision in particular, and, and sixty hours of the intern attending a district and school site-sponsored professional development. Is the district prepared and to, to provide that level of support, supervision?
The district is. I've talked to Dr. Rubio as well as Mr. LaBass. And depending upon the particular field of interest, Dr. Balf is available and other staff in the district are available because they, pretty much, a lot of them have been interns.
And I believe.
They support, they support this, this relationship.
And I think Dr. Balf is, is part of her plan already to be supported. She's already spent lots of hours so far with the, the young gentleman who's, I hear, got, gotten off to a really great start. So if we, I don't know if you want to hear from Dr. Balf on this or not.
So i- is the, that would be great. If the, is the intern a science intern that we currently have?
If we fill that right, it will be a science intern. They're going to talk about science position.
Yes, if you approve this, and I really hope you will do it and do it quickly because.
Let me add one other point. The way this contract is written is for science and special education.
Right.
Because all those are particularly difficult, the one with math areas to deal with.
Right, but science in particular, and, I mean, I think you know that I spent a lot of time recruiting science teachers. We got one, but not the second. And we have identified a young man who's working as a sub right now because that's all he can work as. And I am already mentoring him, and I have been amazingly impressed with what he has done already, and, and he's teaching the chemistry and biology.
Oh, nice.
He, he has absorbed every, every word of coaching that I've, I've offered and set things up. I mean, and I think if you talk to Ms. Allen, she was also quite impressed. But I, that's part of the work that I am planning to do is, is to be supporting him.
And he will fulfill it. The reason that we have, we're looking at this young man, he will meet the credential requirements to be credentialed. He'll meet the credentialing requirements to be credentialed in physics and chemistry and biology. So it's not just we're getting someone who's unqualified. As an intern with the credentialing that he will be seeking, he will be qualified to teach the specific subjects that we're looking for.
That's great.
So he has the subject matter already?
He has the subject, he has, is a major in biochemistry. And I've already talked with him at length. I showed him the curriculum that we've adopted for the chemistry. He immediately took it home overnight, understood that it was inquiry-based and it was really in the direction we needed. He took the biology home, mapped out the year over the weekend, you know, before he even knew he was hired.
So high, high quality?
High quality.
We almost lost him to another school district.
And we almost lost him to another school district.
Tried to get him at the last minute.
But he decided after seeing the other district that, that the other position was too many other teachers and he would just be floating and this would be a more meaningful. And he felt that Emory had a greater need and he wanted to serve.
That's great.
And he's also a young man who is a second language learner himself, who speaks beautiful English and is, not knowing that this is an important aspect of it, said, you know, I've talked to my colleagues, do you understand what it's like to be a second language learner? I really want to reach out to those students, so.
Elevate the conversation.
Yes, so his native language is Tucala.
That's great.
Any other questions?
Okay. No, it's a comfort to know that, that you would be the supervisor.
Please just do it.
No, I mean.
Slide down. Any other questions about item six?
No, again, I'm just so pleased that, you know, staff is really going out recruiting and looking at bringing in high-quality teachers. That's one of the essentials as we move into this new facility, is bringing in these high-quality teachers. So again, I thank you all.
Every day. Essential to every day. So any other questions? We've gone through one through six. Let's see, how about we do, is there desire, no desire to do a motion for one through six? And then we can do a roll call following that?
I'll move to adopt items one to six.
Any, can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections to that? All right, Ms. Tamarie, roll call please.
Member Ash.
Yes.
Member Dwin.
Yes.
Member Pats.
Yes.
Member Afel.
Yes.
President Dice.
Yes.
President Dice, I've had a request from the community to follow Robert's Rules of Order a little bit more closely. So after every vote, I've been asked to recap the vote.
Awesome.
If I may.
Please.
So the board has voted unanimously to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Tamarie. Thank you, concerned citizen, appreciate that. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to now, item J1, Discussion, Action, ECCL Update, Various Ongoing Project Activity Status Report.
Yes, thank you, President Dice. It's now time for our update from Mr. Baker on our ongoing activities related to our Emeryville Center of Community Life project. Mr. Baker, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You can hear me. This is the bi-weekly update or the, at every board meeting. I tend to do an update on the, on the ECCL project. Uh, make this as concise as possible given the hour, but the agenda is a couple of things. Uh, the recently, last week, we had the Citizens Oversight Committee met. I'm pleased to announce that it was, they had a quorum with eight of the nine members present. All but the student members were present. Uh, so that was the first time that entire body had been there, so that was great. Introduced the new members. I gave a project update. The next, the COC decided that they'll be meeting on a bimonthly basis on the third Wednesday of the even-numbered months. So our next meeting will be scheduled for October. The, the, Tom Roush, the chair, reported that the annual report is in pro, pro, progress, which is required by the bylaws. That report has been drafted and now we've submitted the, uh, close out of the fiscal year information. So the financial information is in progress and so that will be issued to the committee members and reviewed and approved at the next COC meeting. Uh, project budget documentation is underway. The district is currently training and implementing a program called Accountability, which is a, I'm sure that, uh, Mr. Bonet could elaborate in this much greater than I can, but it's a, an accounting process used, that is used for school districts that does many things. The thing that we like most about it, and we use it in other districts, is it allows us to track a multi-fiscal year project more effectively. So our senior financial controls manager, Toby Fen, has been involved, has been participating in those training sessions with Mark Bonet and his staff. I'm not sure the timeline for the implementation is, but the group is focusing on that implementation. And that'll also enable us to put the ECCL budget in the state standard format, the JCF thirty-two format that I've mentioned previously. So once that accountability is sort of in place, then we'll complete that and we will complete that state standard format and have that for board review in a next month. Also want to give a design and construction update, an update on our procurement of the testing and special inspection consultant and our procurement of the inspector of record consultant. So design and construction update, the, the soil mitigation, which is called the Raw Remedial Action Work Plan, work. Um, that DT, DTSC, the State Department of Toxic Substance Control, has been reviewing that document. Uh, we anticipate having that review completed this week. Our representative, Jose Leonovo, who has been a great partner, was on vacation for ten days. And so we had a bit of a hiccup where that was delayed. We had thought about working with a colleague in his office, but thought better of it just because he's been so interactive and collaborative. He returned last Thursday, approved a revised work plan, which will enable us to maintain the schedule, and I'll talk about that in a minute, which was terrific. And we anticipate he will be done with the final comments, his back check comments, this week. So we anticipate that we should have approval this week or next week of that, which will close that out. Um, demolition completion is now commenced. Uh, previously, we were going to need to have DTSP approval before completing demolition. The workaround work plan was approved by Mr. Leonovo, so that's commenced this week. So we weren't, aren't going to lose any time, which is good. Turner Site Mobilization, which is their trailers onsite, site utilities, that is underway. We anticipate that by mid-September, we'll have trailers. And our, our, our office then will relocate from here to the job site, and Turner will be onsite full-time. Um, next month, we anticipate bringing the final demolition and raw change orders to the, to the board. I want to point out that these have been budgeted for in the, in the revised budget that we've, we've reviewed with you. It's just closing out what those final amounts are. Again, the soil remediation plan had been budgeted a million dollars total. We're anticipating that's going to be less than eight hundred thousand dollars, and we've adjusted the budget accordingly. But we'll be bringing forth to your body the, the final change orders will document the final amount. So there won't be estimates, there'll actually be costs that will be, will be in place.
So you're saying the change orders will be less than the budget?
No, they'll be about what the budget are now.
Okay.
We've revised the budget based on the projections, but what's included in the budget is still an estimate for what those are. We need to review the documentation. One of our jobs is to review the, the backup, the hours. We signed the daily job cards for hours, but we need to check those and check the math and all that. And once we do that, we'll bring those to you for approval. And then we will be able to turn those estimates in the budget, which are very close to what they'll be, into actual cost to date. Um, swimming pool design has commenced. A, a large group met with the, the swimming pool design consultant, Tristoto, yesterday at the site, including representatives from the city and the, the city's, um, um, manager of their adult recreational programs. We talked about a number of things toward the pool and the, the, the equipment room. And that work is now underway. We anticipate having the construction documents for the swimming pool design done by the end of October, which will then be bid out by Turner to, um, a, a pre-qualified list of swimming pool contractors. And one thing we discussed were a number of all bid alternates that we will then bring forth to the board. Things such as different types of drainage system, different types of equipment, and lighting and some other things. And so that'll allow us to, to choose some things to maintain our budget and then maximize the utility of that budget. In addition, we've had, we had two weeks ago, a furniture, fixtures and equipment meeting with MK Think, who's the FFNE consultant. About a year ago, there was a very extensive FFNE list and budget that was developed by MK Think. Um, we have some tasks though to, which we've kind of alluded to in previous presentations, one of which is to take a, an inventory of existing furniture at both this site and the NE8 site and the temporary high school site. Some of, some new furniture on that list has already been purchased and is in, in use at the temporary high school site. The goal here is to identify what can be reused and what has been purchased for reuse so that we can, and we, we think there'll be some, quite a bit of savings from that, from what's been budgeted. Again, if you recall, we adjusted that budget downward in the budget update because of those things. Um, we're going to identify, we're, we're going to work with Dr. Rubio to identify stakeholders that should be involved in that, such as teaching staff, et cetera. We'll actually go and do an inventory and tag things that will be saved. Then we, and we're going to do that along with MK Think, who's going to provide their expertise in terms of life cycle and longevity of, of things that are there so they can give us a professional opinion and those decisions can be made. And then that, that stakeholder group will identify those things and will revise that list. It will know what needs to be purchased new. And we anticipate that inventory exercise taking place next month. So here's my, my twelve-week look-ahead schedule. You will notice that the, the raw report review and the demolition completion have slipped out a couple of weeks, but the other activities have not. And that's because DTSC approved our plan for starting mobilization and completing demolition while they are reviewing their report. So the overall schedule has not changed at all. Again, activities in September will include mobilization, completing the interior demolition of Building E, shoring existing structures for grading. shoring existing structures for grading, um, doing some site work utilities and doing the building pad grading. This is the, the, what's called rough grading, getting the pads ready where the, where the slabs and foundations are going to go. Then in October, real site utility work will take place, electrical, water, domestic and far water, site communications. Um, and site utilities should be complete at the end of October. And then November, we're going to start seeing footing and foundation form are commencing. Um, it's one thing that's, uh, we need to watch the weather carefully. The rainy season usually starts around the end of October. It'll be good to have the grading and site utilities done. That's usually what gets disrupted most when you have weather problems. Once we, we, uh, you know, keep our fingers crossed in November that we get footings and foundations in. Once the concrete's in, we're impacted by weather a lot less. Just as long as it's not raining, they can work out there, but won't have any soil issues. So we're going to be working with Turner real carefully and closely to sequence work so we mitigate possible delays if we get, um, some rainy weather. I want to talk next about, um, testing and special inspections. So this consultant is a third-party consultant that provides, um, um, it's a testing laboratory that provides special inspections, technical inspections and materials testing specified by the architects and engineers. It's a really important consultant because they provide, um, and this is things like, uh, concrete strength testing and welding observation and steel fabrication in the shop. It's a very important quality assurance exercise, um, where we check and make sure that things are being fabricated, constructed per the plans and specifications. Um, it's, it's, um, we've, we, uh, in April, the district issued a request for proposals to incentive firms of public procurement, uh, which included a detailed scope of work for, uh, the ECL project. Eight proposals were received. Um, we then, when we started work in May, we kind of received, they came in and we received them and so we have been evaluating those. And I want to go over tonight our evaluation methodology, um, also our recommendation and discuss the board approval and award process. So you see, there was a spreadsheet, was issued, a very complicated spreadsheet. I apologize for the complexity and the, the, the lack of explanation. I'm going to go walk through an overview of this. It's much less complicated than it looks. One of the challenges we had is that the RFP that was issued by the district.
Sorry to interrupt, but, um, yeah, can you give me some examples of the kind of the testing or specialized inspection?
Uh, I, one of those is concrete strength. So when you pour a concrete slab or a concrete foot foundation, you do what are called, so you core cylinders. You, you cut a, a cylinder through the concrete. And then they take, they'll take three cylinders and they do destructive testing, usually at three milestones. They'll do a seven-day test, a 14-day test and a 28-day test. And the, the, uh, structural specs specify the strength that needs to have each of those days. And, um, the point there is you want to test to make sure that that concrete is, is, that it's cured to the strength which is designed. Um, also, um, steel fabrication. Steel fabrication is going to be done at an off-site location. Um, and I believe in, up in Northern Cal, the Sacramento Valley. And we want to have somebody there observing to make sure that the steel is being fabricated, uh, to the specified tolerances and procedures. That steel is fabricated in a controlled environment, in a shop. Um, they'll do things, they'll measure heat, air to make sure that it's curing properly. Also compaction testing, when soil is compacted, it's very important the soil be compacted to very specific, um, tolerances so that when we put slabs and concrete on top of it, you don't get settlement. Uh, and there's a host of those tests and they're really important. This testing laboratory representative, we co-located in our trailer so we can observe that. Turner needs to call for those inspections through us, but then we'll monitor those completion. The test results will be reviewed by the architect and engineer of record and ourselves for compliance with the contract documents. It's, it's, it's probably the most important QAQC exercise that we'll be doing out there.
QAQC.
Quality, quality control, quality assurance. Quality control is responsible contractor. We're assuring that that quality control is in place.
And, and the same entity, uh, is expert on concrete and on steel and on soil?
What they typically have is part of our, our, part of the, um, the RFP process was firms need to have all these expertises. So one of our evaluations, do they have expertise in soil and concrete and steel? And, um, there are other things like, um, when flooring is applied, there's a, there's a certain procedure for how adhesive works and how it has to cure, all those sorts of things. And so one of the, one of the outcomes of the RFP, we only got eight submittals because there aren't that many firms that, there are only a handful of firms that have all those expertises. And one of our evaluations was to evaluate their certifications for different testing, their staff qualifications. In fact, you'll see here on this chart, on the left, you'll see these are the items that, um, the RFP letter issued by the district asked them to submit information on. Um, so what we did is we evaluated, now, in that RFP, it didn't say, we're going to give you X points for this and Y points for this. It just said, we want you to submit this information and we'll evaluate it. It didn't specify an evaluation methodology, which is done sometimes, sometimes isn't. So our charge was to evaluate those, but also put in place an evaluation methodology which is transparent, comprehensive and objective. And that's what I kind of want to review with this group tonight. Um, the, uh, so we reviewed the, the, the things you list here in that, that first category, those dozen or so things. We're actually, in the RFP letter, said, please submit us information on these, this information. So we, I mean, in Swinerton, we had three of our team, Carrie Talbot, who's our construction manager, and the Monley Hardisty, who's the project manager for, um, the non-Turner, um, activities, and myself, each evaluated these independently. Then we got together, went through our scores. Our scores weren't really that different, so we reached a consensus on our scoring. So this is the basis of three independent people looking at this, who have expertise in overseeing these types of consultants, and we evaluated the scores. So we took all the sort of, um, the, the criteria that we asked for and we added those up and that shows in that bottom row where it says 37, 20, 44, 29. Then we ranked them. So we ranked them, the highest scoring points got an eight and the lowest one got a one. It's kind of a common way to do this stuff. We also asked for DSA project experience, so experience they had with DSA projects. Some of these folks have done a lot of shopping centers and, um, private projects, other public projects. We wanted projects with Division of State Architects school projects because the specs include specific procedures that are required by DSA. And you'll see, here's the dollars in, in millions of dollars that they, that what they put forth. And we ranked those on a scale of one to eight. Then they gave us a fee proposal based on the detailed scope of work. There was a set of drawings and specs issued with the RFP that says, here's what you need to do. And then they gave us their fee proposals and that's the, the dollar figure at the bottom. We ranked those on a scale of one to eight, the reverse. The lower fee got a higher score and the higher fee got a lower score. So this is just kind of how we scored it. We didn't do any evaluation, we're just saying, we did some evaluate, but this is really how we, we ranked everything and then the next sheet shows how we evaluated it. Any questions about this?
I don't have a question, I have a comment, just that I didn't get to look at this with you, but, um, I, I, even before I turned the page to see how you ranked them, I, I felt number eight looked the most promising to me.
Any questions? I know that, I, I know it's, I, I apologize if it's, if, if I'm not explaining it clearly, but I, I hope that you guys, any questions, please feel free to ask.
But this is, is this the same as the inspector on record?
No, I'll talk, that'll be the next one, the next consultant we select, which is going to be in two weeks, is going to be, or the next report we give, I'll explain that timeline, will be that. That's a different, completely different, this is technical compliance with the way things are designed. Engineering, um, engineering compliance, to make sure things are, are installed as they were designed, as they were engineered.
I'm with you.
The inspector of record is the state's code inspector for code compliance.
Got you.
Uh, is there a specific line item in the budget for this?
Yes, there is.
And what do we have for that?
Um, I confess, I, uh, there's an overall budget, I think, for both IOR and testing lab for, I think, a million dollars. It's in that, that range. I apologize, I don't have that figure here. Um, but when we do, we'll come back again on this one, I'll, I'll, I'll have that figure so that you'll, the board will understand it.
Go ahead.
Going to the next page, and one thing I want to point out before we go into this is there was a, a math error in the one that was issued to the board, um, previously and posted on the website. It's fairly inconsequential, I'll explain what that is. The copy that you have in front of you and the copy shown on the screen corrects the math error, but I'll explain that in a minute. I don't think the results are any different, but I just want to point that out.
Do you know, or does Ms. Tameri know if the posted version that's on the website is the corrected or the incorrect version?
Uh, no, the, the information just came in after it was posted. So what I can do is go back and, um, post the corrected version with that, um, you know, annotation.
That'd be great, if we could just have the, available to the public, the version that we're looking at.
So one, one kind of best practice we have is when we do these things, is we evaluate things different ways to see what the outcome is. And what's, if it, if it works properly, you'll get kind of a similar outcome and it'll really kind of tell you. And the reason we do the different, different methodologies is to, again, dilute any perception of bias. And so we try to be really objective and then also do our point scoring in different, different ways. And it's kind of a thing we've done, um, after having some procurements that were, were challenging and it really shows different, different ways of doing things. So we take those point scores and we kind of add them up different ways. So this is a little bit arcane, so again, apologize in advance if it's, if it's something that, that is, is maybe confusing. I invite, of course, your questions. The first method is really easy. We take the total score of all those 12 criteria, the total score, the total ranking for that, the ranking for DSA experience and the ranking for fee proposal. We give one-third equal weight to each, we just add them up and see what we get. So that's that, when we ranked them on a scale of one to eight. And so you see the totals there. So that's out of a total of 24 points, that shows you what we get. The darkest orange is the first, the first highest score. The medium orange is the middle score and the, the light orange is the third score. So it's just information, it's just a way of adding the points up.
And Mr. Baker, I appreciate your thoroughness. You may not have to go on this to board once you're through every single method.
Okay, all right. I'll then summarize then. Method, method number two is we combine the DSA experience with the point scores because the dollar figure is kind of a weird, um, you know, it depends on, that depends just how many things they submitted. We don't want to penalize someone for submitting, you know, just five projects and someone else submitted eight. So we, we, we combined that together and we gave half, half weight to the proposal fee, halfway to the scoring, just to the scoring different way. Kind of got the same results. Second and third place are different, first place the same. Third method, we said, we said we give only a third of the weight to the fee, which kind of we like to not give the, for professional services, maybe not the biggest weight to the fee. Came up with the same results. We then did something where you, some agencies will take the highest and lowest fee and, and other things and toss them out. And we did that and what that shows, we got the same results. And what that shows, that, that is a tool people use to show kind of consistency, you take the outliers out. But what's remarkable, and I've never had one work this way, is that firm number eight came in first place every time with kind of three, six different ways of looking at it.
What, what are next steps then? Uh, do you, uh, are you moving forward? Do you need board approval to move forward on the?
So here's my question is, is that, this is the evaluation, uh, we just completed it this week. Uh, I, I know that the board typically has two readings, um, a first reading and a second reading. The former contract for this firm will be the standard professional services agreement that was issued with a proposal. So it's the same agreement that we have, that, um, that Nenuan Moore has for hazmat testing and all that. Um, our recommended firm is number eight, which, um, I will, I will state is Signet Laboratories. But we, my question is this, I'd like to come back in two weeks to propose to award the contract. Um, I know this is not really a first reading, but the results were so clear, we thought we might want to see, ask the board what, how it would like us to proceed.
I do note that we've, we also, in the fall last year, created some latitude for this project specifically. So I think we need to revisit that conversation because I can't, I know that we've, we've said this particular project, when there's a need to go with one, there's no need to revisit or, I mean, certain things. So I think, um, and also, we also spoke about using the facilities committee as a, a first swing through and consider that as a first reading as well. So, um, I just wanted to push that out there. But, um, that's helpful that you brought it up. But I do know that, um, in terms of, for us, I think we just need to know that, one, it was one that was budgeted for. What's our timeline to get it, um, in front of us and approved? Because that will help, I mean, I think that will help any, um, decision that needs to be made. Because we, we have to get it done, so it's not like we have this, we got six months to worry about it. Board members comments on that?
Uh, is there, um, uh, I guess, some urgency to, to moving that along?
There's, uh, we have a, because we've done the raw work and demo work, we have a testing lab in place now to do that. They're able to do that. What, what we'd like, the, the, the course that has been, that the, the district took was to hire that consultant for that first phase, but then because of the size of the contract, go out to public procurement for this. So this lines up with the, um, at least leaseback scope of work, which is going to start in September. Our first testing is going to be probably towards the end of September, so it would be, um, from, it would be, it would be, from a scheduling standpoint, if we were to vote to award this contract at, at the next board meeting, which is the September 9th, I think, that would be preferable than waiting until the end of September, in terms of schedule. We don't need to do it tonight, but two weeks would be, would be preferable to four weeks from now.
Um, in terms of schedule, is there a facilities meeting, any?
That's coming up on the retreat, actually.
Yeah. No, I would just ask if we could at least get the contract.
Yeah, sure, sure.
You know, before the next meeting or as soon as possible.
I can do that tomorrow.
Okay, and I think, you know, that would at least suffice for us to at least be able to look at the contract and if we have any questions, to forward those questions to you. And then when we come back on the 10th, if everyone is in agreement, then we can just go ahead and approve the contract then. I don't know how the board feels about that, but, you know, that's a suggestion. We get the contract early, overlook it, come back on the 10th and approve it if everyone is, is, is clear and fine.
Well, our, um, streamlined procedures I recommended, or, or recall rather, was, was where, you know, the schedules were, you know, such that, that, that the, there was a benefit to improving it after one reading. We, we choose to do it after one reading, preferably with a review by the finance committee ahead of time, but.
Facilities, I wish for the one that was.
Yeah, yeah. But, um, I'm fine with planning to do it on the 10th and if we can get the contract a little early, I'm, I'm fine, all the better.
It helps. Christian, member Pats?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm feeling like there's some momentum on eight, but I want to slow that down. Um, when I look through this chart. Sorry. Um, uh, when I look at this chart and I, you know, if you think your methodology is arcane, you should see my spreadsheet. You know, some things really popped out to me, what you sort of chose to exclude, what you chose not to exclude, what you chose to highlight, what you, you know, and I, I agree with you, these are all very standard methodologies and the criterion matrix. But a couple of things, if you know anything about me, price immediately jumps out for me. Um, but the other things that really stuck for me were location and minority ownership. And I feel like as we go down, there are two companies that had both of those things and a couple of that were local. So what did you use to determine location?
Location is, is a bit different though. Location is the location of their laboratory.
Uh huh.
Because it's being able, being able to turn around laboratory tests quickly.
Right, and so where is the laboratory? What, what would be considered a five?
Um, like, uh, I, uh, you know, in the Oakland, Berkeley, Emeryville region.
Perfect, then, so that's location, I mean, that's a really.
Our sector.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know the exact location, but I know that many of these have very local laboratories.
Yeah, so it just, it troubles me that, you know, what's a three means that we're looking at a company that's not local to their laboratories, right? And they're also not minority-owned, uh, and, you know, they are the largest of the companies. So I, when we look at eight, those two things stuck out to me is that they are not local and they're probably, and I think you said it's Signet, so I'm assuming they're a publicly traded company as opposed to?
Yeah, I'm not, I have no idea. I don't, I don't believe they are. It's, it's, they're not that large, but they, I don't, and I, I don't know exactly, but their laboratory, I think, is in Hayward.
Yeah.
Something like that. Um, you know, one, one of the challenges that we had is that the RFP document did not give any, added any weight of one criteria over the other.
Right. Um. And that's fine, I'm just saying that I'm giving weight.
But these are great comments though.
Yeah, and so I'm just sort of thinking, particularly given, uh, I want to say, Mr., uh, his comments earlier this evening.
Mr. Wong.
Mr. Wong, thank you, yeah. It's, it's an opportunity for us to do some things and then also I know there's some incentive in California law when we do construction contracts, that if we do give a percentage of it to, uh, you know, minority-owned or women-owned entities, that, that, that's sort of their intent. So I think to dismiss them because they had the lowest bid, which is a challenge, you know, and I love lowest bids. And they're also a particularly large company because they've done this before, so they don't, they're not like, the other ones just has no experience. So for me, it really stuck, struck out to me, I think it's, uh, company six. So for me, it really stuck, struck out to me, I think it's, uh, company six really stuck out. They both had the lowest bid, they're local, they're minority owned, their safety record gave me pause.
Company six is the highest.
I'm sorry, uh, five.
No, right, I was looking at five.
Five, five, sorry, I apologize, I'm looking at my wrong column here. Five had the lowest bid and then, uh, you know, and they did, you know, $208 million of business. So they're not some fly-by-night like six who had a high bid and is only.
Yeah, and, and, and number five finished second or third in those.
And, and the first few criterias, and it's one of those things where I feel like our guiding principles, yes, there's a clear number one, but to me, they're not that far off. That's one of the problems with these criterion matrices, is the distance from one to another. And it's, when you look at the averages, the biggest difference is right there in your second criteria. It's either you're minority owned or you're not.
And I, I might want to add to, um, yeah, I would add, uh, just for the boards to note that, um, if we're, if we're going, and I don't know how, to what extent tonight, we're going to look specifically at these items. I, I think it might be, I wouldn't recommend to the board, the superintendent, that we look at any individual ones. But if we, if we are going to do that, then at the same, for the same, uh, company, we're looking at number, uh, number five, they also scored the lowest in safety. And so I'd be concerned about that and their litigation score, so I.
Correlation between those two.
I, I certainly, yeah, probably. So I, I, I want to, I do want to thank Mr. Baker for, um, looking at, you know, you, you did this with the value engineering process. I just want to say thank you for looking at a combination of multiple, uh, elements. I haven't spoken, Mr. Baker, before tonight about this, but, uh, when I had mentioned earlier that number eight looked very promising to me, it was because I thought of, when you look at the combination of elements, uh, before I flipped over and saw how you did it. I quickly did some scratching on my own and I thought, well, between, uh, how well they scored in so many areas, although I know, uh, as Mr. Pat's has pointed out, they, this particular company may not be minority or, or female owned, that, uh, and knowing our budget constraints, uh, it looked, uh, for those reasons and multiple, the multiple factors, it looked awfully promising to me.
So one of the things, the way that the RFP letter was written, it had three sections that said, paragraph one, give us your experience on these, these, these 12 things. Paragraph two, give us your DSA project experience and a dollar value. Paragraph three, give us a fee proposal. So the way that, the way that typically public contract code interprets those RFPs is your evaluation methodology needs to match what's shown on the RFP. So this is kind of as close as we could get. It's very common, for example, in RFPs to give extra points for MBWB firms, really, that, that's commonly done. And you, you say you're going to get extra five points or something like that, but we didn't do that in the RFP, so it's hard to, that's, that's why we gave even weight to those first things, because the RFP letter didn't give precedence to, you know, oh, will you get more points if you're local or, that's why it's hard to do it that way. So we, we, we took the RFP letter issued back in April and we kind of interpreted as close as we could to evaluate it, to align with what we asked for. So that's, that's why we did it this way.
Right, but we're not locked into, I mean, if you're saying to me that we can only go by they scored the most points.
No, 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 we're not locked into it. We, we're, again, we tried to be as objective given what we had to work with as we could.
It did seem like you're saying we need to, we need to reflect the relative priority.
Right.
That was in the RFP letter.
That's right.
And that we could be opening ourselves up to.
Right.
Liability if we overweighted one factor.
Right, yeah.
That we didn't identify as so overweighted in the RFP.
Best practice is that when there's not a scoring system in the RFP, is you evaluate it multiple ways and see, you know, kind of average things out or do, do some methodology that looks at things multiple ways and achieves a result.
But they're, again, they've come in second and third.
Correct, they're, they're excellent points you raise.
You know, it's not as if they're the bottom company and we're really going far from the RFP. We're really sticking to, we're using the RFP criteria, we're just aligning it with a local business. We're aligning it with, you know, people of color or a woman owned business, things that I think as a board. That we should reflect, I mean, it's, it's pretty clear to me.
That's our CBA. That's our CBA.
So can I ask this though, question? What would give a score of a one?
Well, we ranked them on one to five. The thing is for some of these correct categories, um, like the minority woman in business, either you are, you aren't, so you either get a zero or a five.
Well, let's, and let me be specific again, for safety and litigation, how would?
So, um, I mean, granted that's, those are, we're doing it subjectively, because, you know, we're on a scale of one to five. And what usually is you read all of them, that's what I, you read all of them and, you know, kind of compare the others, would you give them a, rank them a one to five? So safety means they had a high EMR experience modification rate, which is the, the, a, a number that insurers give, give companies if they have, if they had, um, safety claims, if they had injuries, et cetera. So the more of those they have, the, the higher that number is. So a high number's not a good thing, you want a low number. Um, litigation, we asked them if they had litigation with public agencies, that was in there. And if they didn't have any, a couple of them said we'd have none, they got fives. One firm had listed several things and so they got, they got, they got a lower score. So that's how we, we ranked them on a scale of one to five, which is another pretty common methodology used in these evaluations.
So a firm with one.
So if I see a one in safety, that's letting me know that this firm has had a lot of claims regarding their safety.
That means they may have had injuries on site and that they, again, they're insured based on incidents gives them that score.
Same for litigation, a one on litigation is going to be, uh.
So it could have been, you know, five safety, you know, issues or it could have been three.
Right.
Okay, whereas some of the other ones maybe had none, that's why they got a four or five.
So the, the safety you're getting from the insurance entity, the litigation.
Yeah, we asked them to, uh, provide safety information.
The litigation score, is that self-report then?
Yeah, that was, that's self-reporting, I mean, there's, there's a, they, they sign a document, a, you know, a.
An affidavit.
An affidavit. Um, we didn't do the, I mean, sometimes for large procurements, we actually will do legal due diligence. Our recommendation for this type of firm is they commonly don't, testing labs heart, don't have claims frequently. If it was a contractor, that would be a different situation. We would want to maybe do some due diligence, but, um, not commonly done for this kind of procurement.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the methodology? I just, I, well, I just had a question. I think it will help, um, to know whether or not there's someone that, um, any members of the team that's kind of doing the assessment, if there's, if they're familiar with or have worked with, um, a particular.
Um, the, the, those of us who did the evaluation have worked, I've actually worked with six of the eight firms and, um, Carrie Talbot and Nimony Hardisty have worked with several as well. So there, there, there's only two on that list that I have not worked with. But, you know, that's why we put numbers one to eight and try, we don't, we don't want that to, um, to enter into our evaluation at all.
Well, that's helpful.
And so, and, and I did run the numbers myself and I actually came up with five being number two on the, just compared to the mean. But part of that is because it's a zero or a five in the minority, but when you look at it just all the way down, give the average score and compare to them, if they're above or below the mean, they really score high because of that. And it's treating every criteria equally, I'm not going off the RFP at all. If you do, if you compare not ranked, but actually where the average is, it's kind of an interesting kind of difference.
Yeah, I'm sure that's, you're probably right, because, you know, we, we, they show up.
Yeah.
You know, you can see where they show up and then we do that one.
They show up in second and third, so I, again, I'm just throwing that out there, that I just, I don't want to pick somebody because they came in first because they're the largest firm and.
Well, they're, they're not the largest firm actually on the list, they, they.
Number eight wasn't?
No.
That's just the projects.
That's the, that's the, the value of the DSA projects they submit in their proposal.
Got it.
That they've done work on.
So the experience with the.
And that was, that was, that's why, that was kind of singled out in the RFP letter, but it's kind of, it's not, I wouldn't give that a.
Not weighted either.
I would weight it with the other criteria because it depends on what projects they submitted, that's why we did that different way of reviewing it. But that's just the value, you said, submit, submit examples of your experience and they submitted them and we, that shows, it kind of is an indicator of larger, of more, of more work. But it's not, I wouldn't give it a huge weight normally. Um, but that's not the size of the firm, that there are, I think, two or three firms that are larger companies. I'd have to look, I could get that information if you want, but we didn't ask for that, so.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So are you making a recommendation or are you just putting this in front?
Well, I mean, we're, what I'm asking, my recommendation is to give a, a full packet with, with kind of budget and some other information in the contract to your board. And then to, uh, vote on awarding the contract at the next board meeting. That's the recommendation.
And are you asking us to make a decision tonight based on, you know, or at the next board meeting on, on which of the eight firms?
We're just giving you a report on our evaluation and a recommendation that at the next board meeting, with some additional information we'll provide to the board, we would make a rec, we would award the contract. And we'd make a.
On the 10th?
Yeah.
That's helpful.
Okay.
Um, any, you had something else?
One more thing, this will be like fifteen seconds.
Okay.
So then next, at the next board meeting, we'll do that, but also we're going to give you a report on the evaluation of inspector of record. So the same process, just two weeks later. And then the award of that would be two weeks after that, if that, if that meets your board's favor. Um, this, the IOR is the DSA inspector, the state inspector. So the, what, commonly the district hires that inspector, but they serve at the, they serve DSA. So they, the DSA has a field person that says this is what you need to do, so they operate, but they're tied barred by the district. RFP was issued, we got six proposals, we're currently evaluating and we'll have that report in two weeks.
Sounds good.
That's it.
Update for sure. Um, any questions for Mr. Baker on what we've covered so far, anything? So, um, oh, sorry, any public comments on this particular item? Oh, please, if you will come to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, I'm Barb Singleton, I'm from the League of Women Voters of Berkeley, Albany and Emeryville. The comment I have really isn't on this, but I missed the opportunity of the general comments in the beginning. I came here, um, because I've been assigned to write the ballot, you know, pros and cons for the ballot measures, so the parcel tax. And thank you for the information you sent me, Lisa. But I'm, as an Emeryville resident, I'm definitely interested in the ECL. So I enjoyed this presentation. But when I first, um, you know, I've never been to a school meeting before, a board meeting. When I first looked at the agenda and I saw that there was a one-hour break right in the middle, the first thing that I thought of is, you know, if parents and children, how could they actually attend this meeting? I don't actually have children myself, so I can stay here all night. But, um, and then the break went on to like 90 minutes and I'm brain dead now and I would have liked to have been a little bit more awake to understand, you know, this complex subject matter and, because people are asking me, and I'm not an authority on this, you know, just from the league work. So anyway, I just wanted to make that comment, if you could not have a break in the middle of the presentation, maybe you would have more people than 12 on YouTube watching or participating.
Thank you very much, thank you. You caught us on our special agenda evening, thank you.
And it's worth saying that, uh, our practice is to put the closed sessions at the end of the meeting for exactly that reason, uh, so that we, we stay here from 11 to one in the morning or whatever it might be. But sometimes we have attorneys or other people come and then, then we, we will move it up. But hopefully that, yeah, we will maintain our practice.
It's on our agenda for our retreat, actually, so thank you for that comment, it's timely, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Baker? All right, well, thank you very much, see you in two weeks. Um, we'll now move on to item J2, financial status report. Good evening, Mr. Bonet.
Good evening, this is going to be a really short report, since this are, we've only been into, to business for about one month without our teachers back yet. But I will point you to the first page, page one of the financial status report and tell you that, under the components of ending fund balance, I will be reporting specifically on the reserve facilities, uh, where it says MOU three, that line item that totals $944,000. Those dollars are accumulated through redevelopment pass-through that aren't related to the old revenue limit. And I've been getting information with regard to that from a expert in the field with regard to redevelopment agreements with cities and other agencies. And I expect the last bit of information to come in, uh, early next week. And every time I get a bit of information, we do have a conference call, I have a conference call with him to go over that information. So I'll be presenting information with regard to that and the loan with the cities. They're both very, they're tied together. So, um, I'll be speaking to that probably the second meeting in September. The other thing I would like to talk to the board about is the, um, net decrease in fund balance. When we adopted the budget, we had a $869,000 deficit. So with some most recent changes of personnel, uh, we are looking at reducing that deficit from 869,000 to 425,000. So that's a reduction of about 443,000. And that's as of today, it'll probably go down a little later in the year. The next thing I'd like to talk to the board about is the CalSTRS unfunded liability. You've heard us talk about that, our CalSTRS rates have gone up from 8.5 to 8.88, which is somewhat significant. And over the years, the state was going to increase the rate up to, I want to say 19%, 18%. Excuse me. So at that time, the projected, uh, deficit was $74 billion. Well, through looking at it differently, um, that amount now is about 59 to 60 million dollars. So it's dropped down. And in the future, we're going to have to.
Deficit, that's the deficit for?
CalSTRS.
The whole state?
The whole state.
Billion?
Billion.
Yeah, okay.
I did say billion, didn't I?
You said billion for the 74, but then you said 59 million, I think.
I'm sorry, it was 59 billion.
Okay.
So it went from 74 billion down to 59 to 60 billion dollars.
Current, over what period of time or?
From about, uh, June 13th until, uh, this last week.
That's, that's the current shortfall, in other words?
That's the current shortfall that the state is now reporting out because of some different accounting changes and taking out, um, with a defined benefit plan within STIRS that's fully funded. And I also mentioned this to you because we're, we are going to have to start reporting what that retirement liability is as, uh, as a school district. So we'll have, be showing those in our reporting to the board and in our annual audits.
So we'll have to recognize it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Basically, that's the end of my report. Unless you have questions.
Questions for Mr. Bonet?
I do have a question. So Mr. Bonet, the fund balance that we have here now, it does not reflect the closing of the year 13, 14 as of yet?
That's correct. The, and the, the projections for the reduction of the deficit spending will come to you when we, and in much detail, when we do our first interim reporting period to you. We did not do a 45-day budget revise because the income from the state really didn't change much. It was insignificant to report to the board. So we'll be doing the budget transfers and the increases and decreases and be very specific with the board at that first interim reporting period.
So can I assume that with closing of the 13, 14 year and as well as the reduction of the deficit in almost a half, our fund balance should either stay where it's at or increase a little bit more?
Uh, that depends on what the fund balance is when we close the books. I haven't taken a good look at that, we're still in the process of doing that.
Okay, all right. So this fund, okay, so this fund balance is really the fund balance we had before closing?
That's as of the budget adoption.
Right, okay, thank you.
The, um, reduction in the outstanding liability for CalSTRS to 59, 60 billion? to fifty-nine, sixteen billion that you mentioned?
That's correct.
Yeah, is that, does that affect at all the current increase in what the district's going to have to pay? The thing that ultimately goes up to nineteen percent is, is it, is that percentage somehow related to the, the size of the deficit? Or is that ninety percent just fixed?
You mean the nineteen percent?
That we're going to, in eight years or whenever.
That was a projection, I would say, based on the seventy-four billion dollars. So I'm assuming that that's going to be reduced.
Okay.
And this is statewide.
Okay, so, so.
So it is attributable statewide.
Okay, so there's a relationship between how much that could go up?
It should be, yes.
Yeah, all right. Well, economic conditions change too, so who knows what, I mean, it could increase too, couldn't it, over?
If, if we take, if the economy takes another hit, yes, it definitely can. Because initially the, the, uh, the rate of return that were in these projections and actuarials for STIRS were as high as seven and a half percent annually. And you know, we haven't been there for the last, probably since two thousand nine.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Just had a quick question. Are we, um, in terms of recognizing our CalSTRS contributions, is it for, for this year or do we have to go back or?
It's just for this year and the rates are projected to go up.
Okay.
I don't have those embedded in my head yet.
It's okay, it's okay. Just curious if it's just, um, cause I, I, I mean, I've been on the board long enough to know the conversation about us not having to recognize it. And so the fact that we have to, um, move forward, actually showing what that looks like, um, is quite, is different than what we've had before.
We are, we are also recognizing the OPEB liability.
I see that too.
And we are accounting for that in the current year.
Okay.
Um, I want to say it's a little more than a percent of our payroll.
Right.
What's the OPEB liability?
Uh, other post-employment benefits. So benefits that you get after you retire.
Yeah.
So for employees that worked X number of years, if they retire after the age of fifty-five, portion of those benefits are, health benefits are paid until age sixty-five.
Right, right.
It makes sense, you don't want to lose track of anything. So I, I do appreciate the, the transparency factor, but it is quite significant if we're considering, um, uh, something that's been mandated and finally it's kind of rolled around where we need to show it. So that's, that's helpful.
And is the showing of the retirement liability a, a result of a change in accounting rules or a change in the, some state law?
Uh, I believe it's a GASB accounting rule. And the state is invoking it.
I see.
So a little of both.
And, and is that merely a reporting, like there's going to be a big number? It's in, in a line item on our budget? Or does it actually eat into our, you know, bottom line or does it, what's the material effect of reporting it on our, um, on our sort of ending fund balances or on our annual budget?
Cost that we show in a budget change, it will be reflected in the budget. So it will affect the bottom line.
Can I ask this? If we're just recognizing it, um, it's, I would think that it would be on the balance sheet, correct? Because we don't actually expend it until, until we pay it. So I would think, and I could be wrong, that, you know, we're setting up these as liabilities to be able to recognize what we do owe. Therefore, when we pay it, then it's an expense and then it does reduce the, um, it is counted against the revenue. But until we actually pay out, it doesn't count against revenue. It just shows as a line item on the balance sheet.
Well, actually, we've been paying as you go, so we have been paying for current retirees. So the methodology is to take that actual cost and then spread it amongst our employees in which, to us, it's about a percent, a little bit more than a percent. I think per hundred thousand dollars in payroll.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay, so it's coming out of payroll?
Yes.
It's coming out of payroll account, okay.
So that's the magnitude of the, the effect on the budget will be about a percent per hundred thousand dollars?
But, but it's a charge to the, to the, it's a charge to our, it shows as an expense as we make payroll payments.
Right.
Got it. Okay.
So we'll think.
Can I?
I have a different question on a different topic, so go ahead.
Well, I wanted to kind of piggyback on member Adfeld, um, comment on the benefits and the, um, more like the decrease in the STIRS, um, percentage. So what did we budget for, for fourteen, fifteen? Did we budget at the high nineteen percent or did we budget?
We budgeted the eight point eight eight percent.
All right, so we don't, so.
Which is what's required by the state for.
For this year.
Right. The nineteen percent is what we ramp up to by what, twenty, twenty-one or something?
Something like that.
Okay.
It's.
But it was a little higher. It, it was projected to be higher this year, but they reduced it, right?
Yes, it was, it was in the like nine and a half or nine point three.
Exactly, right.
So my, somewhat relating question, the topic is, um, uh, about the budget approval. Did the county, I assume, approve our budget as of August fifteenth? They got to take some action as opposed to conditionally approving or not approving?
Last time I spoke to Jeff Potter, they were in the process of drafting the letters to send out to districts, uh, regarding approval of budgets and LCAP.
Right.
And have we? And I, we haven't received.
We haven't heard anything negative?
New process.
Uh, I think the last question was regarding the, um, percentage on, uh, on, on item area three regarding, okay, that, that Mr. Bonet responded to, which is called, I forgot what it was.
There was a clarifying question with, with regard to the calculation of the percentage of increased service. You had given me a copy of the formula that you had presented to Oakland Unified. And we were, the district is using the FICMAT.
Right.
Formula of that same, uh, and I can't remember the term of it either.
Uh, the, the proportionality percentage?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
So we have, uh, we revised that slightly. The, the county office had calculated a different percentage and I agreed with that, with that change. And, um, they were asking clarifying questions of all districts in the county, I think with the exception of, of one district.
Mm-hmm. But, um, so we're talking about two things here. One is the budget approval and one is the LCAP approval, which the county did together on August fifteenth. So.
We haven't received any information from the county yet.
On budget or LCAP?
On budget.
We've, we've got some clarifying questions on LCAP.
Just one clarifying question.
On just the proportionality percentage?
Yes, but, but the LCAP was approved.
Yeah, yeah. So that, I mean, that, which is, which is my understanding, uh, is that Alameda County approved all the LCAPs. And that, uh, but they also had clarifying questions for all the districts, maybe all but one. And a lot of them around the, the proportionality calculations.
There were two districts that stood out in Northern California area. One was Berkeley Unified and the other was San Jose Unified. So the state is, is using Berkeley Unified and San Jose Unified's LCAP as a model, uh, going forward. I do know that.
Yeah, stood out, uh, on what criteria and a model for what?
Positively.
I don't know what criteria they use, but.
Okay, well, I think ours is as good a model as Berkeley, so that's what I'll say. Yeah, I can, uh, I can send you the, I've got the three-page letter that Alameda County sent, that lists the questions asked different districts. So if you have, I'll send it to you too.
Any other questions for Mr. Bonet on financial status report? Any public comments on the financial status report? All right, thank you, thank you very much. Um, now we'll move on to item K, board reports announcements. Um, I think there was a request just to get the information about back to school night to the board members. Um, if that can be emailed out. And any other board reports announcements?
I just want to say I was able to make it to both sites on the first day of school. And, um, you know, I've lived next door to Annie Yates for ten years now and I have never gone inside to, uh, see the first day of school. And it was such a joy to see kids lining up with teachers. I was able to meet a lot of the new, a lot of the teachers that I hadn't met and I, I made it a point to introduce myself. I successfully only embarrassed myself once. Um, but other than that, it was just such a great experience. And I was able to come back later in the day and I have to say, uh, Ms. Allen has done a really nice job at ESS. I, I will say they must have had a run on medium T-shirts because when I went to buy one in my size, they were out. So I got her working on that. I want an Annie Yates T-shirt and an, and an ESS T-shirt, so, um, maybe not a medium, maybe a large. So, uh, but I, I just have to say, it was a great experience and it was really nice to open school and see people lining up and teachers. I, I, kids running up to the previous year's teacher, so excited to say hi, always puts a smile on my face.
That's nice.
Thank you.
I would say, well, with that being said, I was able to, um, visit ESS today and, you know, as well, it was a very pleasant visit. Students were in their classes attentive, um, staff was, well, I actually got welcomed by a staff member right when I hit the door. You know, nice to see you again, you know, welcome. So it was a really pleasant, um, visit today.
That's great. Any other board reports announcements? We have, uh, we have?
I got a little, yeah, I'm just echoing them. Um, I did visit, uh, well, I've been at Annie Yates every day dropping my son off. And enjoying the energy of the new school year. Uh, and, uh, you know, meeting, uh, uh, some of our new staff there as well. Secondly, the, um, uh, I guess I learned a, a couple of weeks ago, but have neglected to tell the board, so I'll, I'll tell you now that, uh, as I think I told you, I applied to, uh, present at the CSBA Annual Conference on, uh, in December on LCAP engagement and, um, uh, and was accepted. So I will, I will be presenting at this year's annual conference.
Reason to go.
And, uh, the panel, the panel is on LCAP engagement and the, um, in addition to myself, we have a student organizer, from, uh, Californians for Justice, but they'll, they'll probably also talk about the work that we did here with youth together. A parent organizer, uh, from Pico, California. And a teacher organizer or, uh, someone from the California Teachers Association. Talking about, um, sort of best practices and engagement, so.
That's great, great.
You may want to talk to Berkeley, you may want to talk to Berkeley before you get that presentation.
Could be an exciting CSBA, CSBA conference this year, I think.
Any others? That's fine. All right, well, um, we'll now move into calendar review. I can run that, I can do it. We have our next regular board meeting, September tenth here. Um, and then our semi-annual retreat of the board will be September thirteenth, eight thirty sharp, um, here at Ralph Hawley. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.